Governing Board Meeting Agenda for August 19, 2024. Item number one is, please take the roll.
Coleman.
Here.
Simonson.
Boss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Young.
Here.
We have a forum.
Next item, and two, is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
Been moved in second, please vote. Motion carries. Item number three is approving the issuance of eight project-based vouchers to Alley Landing Limited Partnership and eight project-based vouchers to Alley Landing Two Limited Partnership, Board Communication, number 24-339.
If possible, I'd like to make a few comments on this. This is a project that was front and center when I announced I was running for office. And luckily, I had a relationship with the property owner who brought in some really impressive partners from Ohio that do affordable housing around the country. The company name is WODA. They're from Columbus, I think, right, Columbus? Is that what? And I've enjoyed getting to know them, spending a lot of time. It's not been an easy project. There's a number of layers of financing to this. They received state funding some time ago. But one of their goals was to keep a section of the first building and then a section of the second building, which we're not approving the second building, we're approving the vouchers for the second building, but to create space that serves people that are coming out of homelessness and into shelter. The issuance of these project-based vouchers, along with home money that the council approved before I got elected, also provides for supportive services. The apartments there, in a really great area of our city, will be 30% of AMI, average median income, which puts this as kind of one of the key pieces that we have underway in that segment of affordable housing, you know, those most needing assistance. This is 40 units. Of those 48, we are approving project-based vouchers so that they have the availability of working with the VA, which is less than a half mile up the street, and to work with veterans or other people coming out of homelessness. I think over the last couple of meetings, you've heard me talk about this project in hopes that it would be complete. I want to thank Randy Thompson, who owned Plaza Lanes, he and his wife, he's not even the first generation that's cared for that property. Barry is here from Columbus, Ohio, and WODA, and I think this is an excellent project. I want to thank the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association that has been very accommodating and cooperative, especially Jeremy, the president, and all that's gone into this. As we all know, these are not easy to find a home in a welcoming neighborhood. This is a great project and one that I'm really happy that we hopefully are passing tonight. And I understand that if we get busy on it, we might have some ground being turned yet this year.
That's the goal, Council.
All right. So I would move item three. If anybody has any questions?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote. Thank you for that.
Good job.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item four, approving submittal of the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's DMMHA 2024 Section 8 Management Assessment Program Certification to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Board Communication, number 24-338.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 This part of the meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene at 5:00 for our regular city council meeting. I'd like to call the Des Moines City Council meeting for August 19, 2024, to order. Please take your roll.
I think your mic might be off.
Turn your mic on. It's just, can you hear me?
You're good. We can now.
It was just.
You're good.
Bowson.
Here.
Simonson.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a forum.
Next item is number two, approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. The consent item 21 was withdrawn at the request of the developer.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Is that loud enough?
Seven, yes.
Can you get any closer to that mic?
We're having technical difficulties.
I turned the speaker all the way.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's better.
Item number three is approving consent agenda items three through 40. These are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests an item to be removed or to be considered separately. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Can I vote no on five?
That's not, it's not cigarettes.
Oh. That is correct. Never mind.
I'll take that. Okay. With that?
I will move approval of the consent agenda. Three through 40.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. We'll move into the hearings. First one is item number 41, on a request from JSG Properties LLC, Gary Jones Officer, to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification of the property from business park to industrial and to rezone 3001 McKinley Avenue from EX mixed-use district to limited I-1 industrial district to allow the expansion of the existing industrial and warehousing use with zoning regulations. First is consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. First, parties in interest, applicant for rezoning of those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second is germane, comments from the general public, two minute per person to speak, 20 minutes maximum. Is there any one first parties of interest wishing to speak? If not, we'll move to any public comments, and if that, we'll open it up for discussion with the council.
I don't know if the applicant is here or not. One of the things that the record below shows is that there's interest in enclosing the dumpster to limit the noise that is impacting the neighbors, because I think this will expand the operation. And I just have interest in making that a condition of the zoning. I think I'm okay with the zoning otherwise. Also, just wanted to note, and I think this is addressed in the site plan piece of this, but wanted to at least be on record, I know site plan will deal with landscaping that will provide a buffer between the adjoining properties and the business expansion, and I think it's important that you get as mature trees as possible. I know there's a range. You can buy little saplings and you can buy bigger trees. It's a little more expensive to buy the bigger trees, but I think it's particularly important, given the noise implications. I think we can balance the two uses, but my hope is that when we get to the site plan, staff will address that.
Yeah. Great comments. If I can just chime in a little bit, I've heard from quite a few of the neighbors. So the problem is, is there is garbage that goes everywhere throughout the neighbors to the north. There are little pieces of plastic that go everywhere. So they'd like to have the dumpster enclosed inside the building, because what happens is, is they take pieces of glass and throw them outside into the dumpster. And hearing that all day, less than 100 yards from residential homes, is problematic. So I think they've stated that at the neighborhood meeting. I think staff knows that. Great comments by Councilman Mandelbaum. I think he's heard from a few of them. So if his motion is to enclose the dumpster inside the building, I would second his motion to do that.
Mayor, I believe they would need to continue this hearing and have that brought back as part of the stipulations.
Why's that?
Because it wasn't in the documentation.
Well, staff's had four weeks of knowing that that's what the neighbors asked for, that's what council members.
But let's follow the process.
We can continue.
Yeah, we'll continue. We'll bring it back.
I'll move to continue and provide the direction.
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue the hearing.
And we'll ask them to consent to these conditions, is that right?
Correct.
Size of trees, enclosure.
Maturity. We'll get more of the details worked out.
Right.
Conditions have to be agreed to prior to the conclusion of the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. With that, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 42, on a request from Lillian C. Ruchelli, owner to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed-use and to rezone two parcels located at 3803 Indianola Avenue and 3805 Indianola Avenue from N3A Neighborhood District to MX1 Mixed-Use District to allow a mixed-use, commercial, and residential redevelopment of the site. A is first consideration of ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of ordinance above. waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. Is there any parties of interest that'd like to speak? If not, any germane comments? Are you?
Was there an opportunity to speak on item 41 that was presented to us? I'm not the owner, but I'm the engineer on the account. And I guess that's what they talked about, the enclosure.
Is, at this point, we're extending the hearing?
The hearing was continued.
So you'll be able to speak at the next?
I see. Okay.
So with that, this item 42.
I've had plenty of conversations. This is an exciting project for the southeast side. This has been an abandoned restaurant for many years. I'm glad that it's going to get some new life to that parcel. I sure appreciate it. I see the guys in the audience, so thank you for coming down. I'm happy to be supportive of 42A and 42B.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move 42A and 42B.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
I'm a little rusty.
I hit the wrong button, I'm sorry.
Yep. Just a second. Did you have a question?
I hit the wrong button.
Oh, you hung up, okay.
Narrows.
Thank you. Sorry.
Seven, yes.
Number 43, on assessment of $1,500 penalty and 30-day suspension to Super Quack 303 Southeast 30th Street for violation of Iowa alcoholic beverage laws, 81924. Is the owner here to speak? If not?
I'll move item 43.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is number 44, on the issuance of not to exceed $34 million general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Germane comments from the general public, two minute per person to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Please state your name, address, or ward. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, and I live in Ward III. Hearing item 44 involves $34 million in general obligation bonds for many items, including municipal housing projects and the acquisition, restoration, and abatement of nuisance properties. I ask that the city please put more funding and attention on these municipal housing projects, especially since according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Reports from 2021 to 2023, the city failed to meet their own goals around housing units. Specifically looking to 2023, the city constructed zero of five new rental units rehabilitated, 11 of 20 homeowner housing units, and assisted zero of 35 households with raptury housing. Additionally, an ordinance that the council is considering on September 16th would direct funding away from the vacant property work involved in these bonds and into enforcing new city code against the houseless population. If that ordinance passes, council will need to reevaluate the funds for this group of general obligation bonds. Because if the city reduces its efforts to catch vacant properties early on, it will become more expensive to rehabilitate them and restore their use as housing. We often see this leads to buildings so deep into disrepair that they become dangerous to the public and have to be totally demolished and eventually entirely rebuilt to make suitable housing. I will also note that while in 2023, we saw the city hold 25 private meetings with developers to discuss potential code changes, to my knowledge, the city has not held any comparable meetings on municipal housing projects with impacted populations. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll move 44, 44A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Number 45, on the issuance of not to exceed $20 million, 100,000 general obligation urban renewal bonds for essential corporate urban renewal purposes, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Germane comments for two minutes per person to speak. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 45, 45A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Item 46, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million, 300,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-1, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Is anyone wishing to speak?
See none, Your Honor. I'll move 46, 46A.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Number 47, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million, 300,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-2, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
And that was 47, 47A.
47 and 47A.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Number 48, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million, 300,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-3, Council Communication, number 24-342. A authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I'll move 48, 48A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item number 49, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million, 300,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-4, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none. I'll move 49, 49A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Westergaard, I didn't have it done yet before you voted.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 50, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million, 300,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-5, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'll move 50 and 50A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 51, on the issuance of not to exceed $1 million, 300,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP-6, Council Communication, number 24-342. A is authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak to this? State your name, address, or ward.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, and I live in Ward Three. Hearing item fifty-one involves one point three million dollars in general obligation bonds for many items, including the police academy. We know that from work sessions and city documents that city staff and contractors are currently making plans for a new police department headquarters and potentially new police academy at the former Nationwide site, though council has not publicly voted on any items to directly approve a new headquarters or academy. The city should instead move funding priorities from this set of general obligation bonds, from this non-transport investment and policing efforts such as, efforts such as housing projects that would help reduce crime and homelessness across the city, at least until the council has taken a public vote on this matter and DMPD has fulfilled the recommendations they worked with Twenty-First Century Policing and other groups to establish. Thank you.
I'll move fifty-one, fifty-one A, your honor.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Number fifty-two, on the issuance of not to exceed one million three hundred thousand general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP dash seven, council communication number twenty-four dash three four two. A is authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak to this item?
See none, your honor, I'll move fifty-two and fifty-two A.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven yes.
Item number fifty-three, on the issuance of not to exceed one million three hundred thousand general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes, GCP dash eight, council communication number twenty-four dash three four two. A is authorization for additional action. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, I'll move fifty-three and fifty-three A.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is number fifty-four. It's amending chapter one fourteen of the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes as follows. Council Communication number twenty-four dash three thirty-one. Parking modifications related to downtown peak hour restrictions. One, Seventh Street, High Street to Watson Powell Jr. Way. Number two is Tenth Street to Walnut Street to Pleasant Street. Number three is Seventeenth Street to Grand Avenue to Ingersoll Avenue. Four is Center Street, Sixth Avenue to Seventh Street. Number five is High Street, Sixth Avenue to Fourteenth Street. B is parking modification, Ninth Street from Walnut Street to Locust Street. Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm happy to see some of these recommendations. These were some things that have been included in Connect Downtown and that plan, so it's been part of our master plan for a while, and these are fairly easy changes to make. And hopefully, there will be, I think, some additional changes where we're getting rid of, getting rid of some of that peak hour parking that is, or peak hour parking restrictions that are unnecessary and allowing for more parking. Small thing we can do to keep that plan moving forward, and I'm glad to see we're taking this action. And I'm happy to move item fifty-four, fifty-four A, one through five, and fifty-four B. And pursuant to rule forty-two A, I would move to waive the second and third reading as well.
I'd like to second this, and just with a question, if this is approved tonight, when would these changes take place?
So again, there'd be publication requirements, and then the signage would need to go up.
Or down.
Or down, in this case, in many of these cases.
Roughly a month or so, or?
I'll have to get back to you on the signage piece, but the publication is usually within ten days.
There shouldn't be too big of a lift to take signs down.
Two and a half weeks.
Correct, so I would hope it was in that same timeframe.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Simonson votes yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. We're now at where we have our public speaking, so at the end of the regular meeting, we'll go into the public speaking. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion. The opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each for up to twenty speakers for a total of one hour. Speakers will be called forward, and individually, we ask everyone to please state their name, address, or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep your comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. It is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your support of Des Moines, and the first one is Louise Gomez.
Louise Gomez, I live in Ward Four. Just here to remind you all of your job. Not a single representative of the city government attended a community town hall last week where we talked about how to help our neighbors who do not have secure housing. Something tells me that you were all at the fair. If you were there, you would have heard that the shelters are full. There were folks who are working, frontlines, working in shelters, who told us that there are no beds available. Shelters are full, again, I don't know if that gets through. You all recently voted to not allow for more shelter on the south side, but are quick to waive readings and vote to allow for more parking and developers to gentrify our neighborhoods. This isn't a housing issue, this is about your priorities. There are plenty of empty lots and apartments that your developer friends built. Yet, you think that the solution is to put our most vulnerable neighbors, folks dealing with mental health issues, addiction, folks fleeing domestic violence and facing crises, your solution is to put them in direct conflict with violent police officers. Some of these folks who are fleeing domestic violence are having to deal with their abusers who are police officers. I don't know if you know this, but fifty percent of police officers are domestic abusers, commit domestic violence. I don't know how that solution would make any sense, but yeah, also, like, fining people fifty dollars and taking them to jail to put a simple misdemeanor in their record will make it harder for them to obtain housing. So do you really think that that will help folks get out of the situation they're facing? I mean, like, is this, I don't understand how you can come up with a solution like that, like, I really don't get it. You all show a lack of empathy. I, like many other Des Moines people who live in this city, are one tragedy away from losing secure housing, and that would put me in a spot where you automatically assume I'm a criminal. You all show a lack of human decency by remaining silent as a public servant while there's a genocide happening. You all are showing how incompetent you are by not doing your job, listening to the will of your constituents, by not being able to provide public reliable transportation. It's embarrassing that none of you would show up to a public meeting to listen to our community, exchange ideas about how to deal with the most important issue we have, which is taking care of our most vulnerable neighbors. But something tells me that you're only worried about creating profit for your campaign donors. Thank you, that's all I have.
McHalen. McHalen Mayhale.
My name is McHalen, I'm a resident of Ward One. I'm also here to address you all about the ordinances to criminalize houselessness and also the study with via transportation and the purchase of the Nationwide Building and planning of a new police headquarters behind closed doors. I think it demonstrates that you know what you're doing is wrong when you give residents only three days' notice before calling for a special meeting Monday morning at seven thirty AM and wanting to fast-track these ordinances. It also demonstrates that you're trying to keep plans about the new police headquarters quiet when it's not brought up at council meetings and when there's no transparency or community input. I think rather than representing the public and residents of Des Moines, you are all hiding behind closed doors and avoiding engagement with us. It's really clear from this room and from the last city council meeting and from even the Monday morning meeting that residents of Des Moines oppose these ordinances and that all of us know that not having a roof over your head is not a crime. We learned at the forum that there are fifty beds for women who are experiencing houselessness and a hundred and twenty beds for men in all of Polk County. We also learned that the fourteen regional service areas that provide for folks experiencing houselessness and mental health crises have been cut in half and that behavioral health has been added to mental health services. So these same service providers that are dealing with half of those services being cut are also having to deal with addressing mental health and addiction at the same time. Our services are inadequate, and sending people to jail is another form of slavery. These ordinances are ridiculous, and they need to be, you should just drop these plans. Like, the Des Moines Register editorial board put together a really good piece of writing that you all should read, and it's very simple, in this case at least, for you to do the right thing.
Is Elizabeth in? If not, Terry Vorbrick.
Honorable mayor and city council members, my name's Terry Vorbrick, live at forty-fifty-three Cayman Boulevard in Ward Three. Excuse me. I also live next door to an operator with thirty fowl comprised of ducks, chickens, and roosters, which have included nine roosters. The fowl reside in a metal coop with an open-air, non-enclosed run that has allowed several chickens to literally fly the coop from time to time and run in my yard and adjacent properties. The roosters have begun crowing at four forty-five AM and continue as late as nine PM. Crowing can last ten to fifteen minutes several times each hour. Sitting on my back deck with friends always produce comments like, "How do you live with this noise?" And, "Really, the city allows this?" At the August fifth council meeting, some of the speakers touted that no complaints have been made regarding chickens and roosters. I'm here to say that's not true. I have personally called in eleven noise complaints to the police department non-emergency dispatch over the past year and with no resolve to the ongoing noise issue. In general, I support backyard chickens and those who wish to produce their own food. Eggs are a good source of protein. However, the current Des Moines fowl ordinance is too lax and needs to be changed. The ordinance allows for a wide spectrum of poor flock management practices that have resulted in today's controversy. Also, at the August fifth city council meeting, many passionate chicken and rooster owners defended the current ordinance, cited cities such as Houston, Austin, Texas, Kansas City as encouraging backyard chickens and model ordinances. The Des Moines Food Security Task Force report dated October twenty-three cites Boston, Massachusetts, and Seattle, Washington as best practices for the various food initiatives. A few of the Food Security Task Force members have spoken regarding the current fowl ordinance stating that there is no need for changes. I reviewed the fowl ordinances of the cities mentioned, and I would encourage council and city staff to consider incorporating the following common themes from those cities identified by the Des Moines chicken owners and the Des Moines Food Security Task Forces having progressive best practices. They all require permits to own chickens. Most limit the number of chickens to six and eight. All require predator-proof enclosed structures located ten to fifty feet from residential homes. Austin limits the number of chickens to eight without a permit. To have more than eight, you are required to get a permit that includes all neighbors' signatures for approval. Houston allows thirty chickens, but the enclosed structure must be a hundred feet from any neighboring residential school or church structure. All of these cities prohibit roosters, as do all of the other cities in our metro area and most of all the cities in the state of Iowa. Additionally, a new ordinance must require screening with privacy fences along adjacent residential property lines and no grandfathering of ownership. Everybody has to comply with the new rules. Thank you.
Rebecca Carter. Rebecca Carter. John Noble.
Hello, my name's John Noble, I live in Ward One. Like a lot of people who are here to talk about the housing ordinances, I'm really sick of being here, I don't want to be here. I have a kid who needs to go down, who needs to sleep, I have time that I, seriously, I don't want to be here. And we wouldn't need to be here if these ordinances were not coming up again and again and again, if you weren't continuing to push these ordinances, if you just dropped these ridiculous ordinances or committed to voting no on these ridiculous ordinances. A lot of people have showed up. They've showed up in public, they've showed up here, they've showed up again at that community forum that none of you wanted to attend to talk about their opposition to these ordinances. I have heard my representative Chris Coleman and others talk about how we need, let's say, faith communities to step up. Well, very conveniently for all of you, a bunch of downtown pastors signed on to an ordinance, signed on to a letter against this ordinance. Those are the people who do run the kitchens and the clothes closets that you want to pass off onto them, and they are opposed to these ordinances. So a lot of people have been speaking, but we don't actually know who has been speaking. We had three people who spoke in favor at the first meeting, two of them on behalf of their employers, on behalf of downtown businesses, but I have noticed there are several CEOs who show up to these sorts of meetings, who don't say a lot, who don't actually say anything, but I wonder if they need to say anything, or if your developer buddies and your donors need to say anything, because I think we can all figure out or put two and two together about who is behind these ordinances. We can also put two and two together about who you listen to and who you don't, because it is very clear that the public is opposed to these ordinances, and I would like to know which powerful people have gotten you to be in favor of these ordinances. That is something that the people of Des Moines will figure out, that is something that the people of Des Moines want to know, but it is clear again and again and again, I have asked you in public, I have asked you, Chris, I have asked you in public, Carl, I have not heard anything from any of you. So some of us are speaking, some of us can apparently exert our influence while being silent, but all of you have chosen a deeply shameful silence. You can still turn that around, you can still vote no on this ordinance, you can still drop it, you can leave it alone, you can vote no on the ordinance, you cannot move it forward. And the public is clear that that is the only moral option that you all have. How can you see this many people, faith leaders, community leaders, neighborhood leaders, step up and say this ordinance is bad news? What are we at, like, over a thousand small businesses? I think over two thousand, when you talk about small businesses that aren't here, meaning we're catching national attention for this, and you all won't even listen to them. So who will you listen to? Clearly, this council listens to the rich and the powerful.
Ryan Arnold. Ryan Arnold. Lloyd Couchman. Lloyd Couchman. Nathaniel Tesse-Wolfe. Wesley Moore. Lindsey Rittland.
Hi, I'm Lindsey Rittland from Ward Three, and I'm here to discuss the criminalizing houselessness. So I'm a drug and alcohol counselor at a Des Moines hospital, a person in long-term recovery from both mental health and addiction issues, and a fellow constituent who is here to speak on behalf of those who have not been awarded the same privileges as me. Mental health disorders and substance use disorders go hand in hand. A recent meta-analysis found that mental disorders with the highest prevalence in the houseless population are in fact alcohol and drug dependents. Just last month, ninety-three percent of the houseless population seeking emergency medical care here in Des Moines had a substance use disorder. As a counselor who works directly with this population on a daily basis, I have seen a significant increase in methamphetamine and stimulant use. There is evidence that houselessness increases drug use among those already using it, and a lot of times, it leads to them adding new substances, therefore, houselessness can induce progression in the disorder. This population has already had to turn to methamphetamine and stimulant use to stay awake for fear of their belongings being stolen. There is no doubt that their use will continue to increase if they have the added concern of being criminalized in the simple act of needing a place to sleep. Methamphetamine psychosis is already a problem in our local hospital emergency departments. This particular psychosis is a serious side effect of- This particular psychosis is a serious side effect of heavy methamphetamine use. It is distressing and dangerous, both for the user and those around them. It is the most challenging aspect of the frontline management of methamphetamine use. Our hospital staff are already at their breaking point. If you genuinely care about Des Moines and its members, not just the way it looks, then do not vote for this policy.
Samuel Brinstad Hesper. Samuel Brinstad Hesper.
My name is Sam Grinstad. I'm from Ward 3. I'm going to be speaking about criminalizing homelessness. You sit there in your chair wielding your power and you go back to your comfortable home with all of your first-world luxuries and think nothing of the fact that people are sleeping on the streets because of things outside of their own control. Where should they go? Many of these people are veterans, LGBTQ youth forced from their homes, and battered women. You can sit here comfortably in this building and look at people as numbers on paper, so detached from reality that you dismiss real people in a real-life situation. If you have any respect for your job, you would go outside and explain to people who are sleeping on the street why punishing them will help them. If you think the city has offered these people enough avenues for help, you should sleep on the street for one night and see how easy it is to get a job with a felony conviction and no home address. Watch while a homeless person is arrested and having their belongings destroyed and explain to them how this is going to help them. There is blood on your hands because of this and I hope you never forget that. I have a lifetime of political involvement ahead of me and I will be outspoken to the highest of my ability about your lack of character. I will urge my friends and loved ones to vote against you and inform them of your lack of basic human empathy. I imagine it stems from many years in government with bureaucratic processes turning you callous towards the suffering of others, but those are people with names, stories, faith, hope, and children. Speaking of children, how will you explain this to yours? What about your grandchildren? I am not naive that political decisions require compromise and pragmatism, but some decisions are so blatantly bad that anyone can understand them. No matter how much nuanced language and justification you use, you will go down on the wrong side of history for this decision to criminalize the most vulnerable among us. That is the definition of punching down. Shame on you.
Jean Hesper. Jean Hesper.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Ah, I'm getting there. My name is Jean Hesper and I live in Ward 3. You have heard from many speakers with great ideas giving you more reasons to vote against the housing ordinance than reasons to support it. In 1987, Congress passed the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. This landmark legislation was a testament to our government's collective commitment to provide unhoused students with the same educational opportunities as housed students by removing as many barriers to learning as possible. More than 30 years ago, our federal government recognized that public institutions had the moral and ethical responsibility to care for those who need it most, particularly in their local communities. We all share in this responsibility, but your prohibited camping proposal does nothing to help those in our community who need it most. So if you do believe you have an ethical, if you do not believe you have an ethical responsibility, consider the significant economic impact on our community when you kick the can down the road instead of working unreal solutions. Our healthcare costs continue to rise as the unhoused and uninsured use our emergency rooms because they have no health safety net. What about the additional cost to our police and firefighters on the front lines of punishing people because they are not in shelters, shelters that are not even available? This is time away from addressing severe crime and serious emergencies. If cost is not an issue for this city council, what about the adverse health risks on our overall population, including public sanitation and the environment? What about our community safety? Again, arresting and displacing do nothing to solve these issues. Punishing people with fines or moving camps because they lack shelter is not a plan. It merely shifts things to other areas. We need comprehensive, responsible, healthy, and cost-effective strategies. I urge you to convene a task force of Iowa's best and brightest housing advocates and continue working with that task force to develop a better plan. If we can send an unmanned mission to Mars, I am sure the smart people of our city council and the experts in this field can devise a better plan than punishment for being homeless. I especially wish to thank my representative, Josh Mandelbaum, for voting against this ill-conceived proposal and I urge you all to reconsider, please, your votes for it. Thank you so much.
Giada Morrisey. Giada. If not, Monica? Okay.
My name is Giada Morrisey. I live in Ward 1. Good to see you, Carl. You missed a couple of meetings. We're participating virtually and Mike Simonson is virtual today. It's awesome that you all are still able to do your jobs when you're not here. Unfortunately, that option is never available to members of the public as there is no way for them to participate in city council virtually. That's shameful. I heard you all had a secret meeting last Friday to rework your ordinances. Ooh, breaking public meeting law. You guys love to do that, don't you? It's shameful that you would continue to work in secrecy on an issue that has drawn great public attention to city council. I'll say to you now, there's no version of these ordinances that we will accept. Last Wednesday, I was at the community town hall where residents from across the city came together to propose solutions to addressing homelessness and poverty in our community. I heard about many additional problems with current services that I wasn't aware of. I also heard so, so many wonderful ideas for solutions. Monica is up next to speak and I'll let her speak to those. The livestream from the town hall has been emailed to you as well as public comments received at the meeting so that you can go ahead and catch up on what you missed. Hope you had good vacations. If you want public-private partnerships to be the solution to addressing homelessness, then you need to put in the work on the public side. Are you willing to open a 24/7 warming or cooling center during extreme weather? Are you willing to have public work staff at additional dumpsters in areas where homeless people live? Are you willing to offer free accessible storage for personal belongings that isn't just available after the city destroys camps? Are you willing to raise the minimum wage in Des Moines? Are you willing to support a renter's bill of rights and increase regulations on landlords to provide safe, accessible housing? And are you willing to prosecute landlords who fail to do so? Have you all spoken to your own churches and church leadership about the ways that they can step up? Have you asked your own donors to support nonprofits working to address houselessness? Are you willing to fundraise on behalf of these organizations? Are you willing to do your job and fulfill the public half of the public-private partnership? Linda, are you willing to work with your fellow Realtors to get more folks into housing? She's not even looking at me. She must be playing Candy Crush again. Carl, are you willing to support the organizations doing outreach for those living along the trail named after you? Connie, are you willing to provide employment for formerly homeless or formerly incarcerated individuals at your businesses? Mike, are you willing to design affordable housing through your firm? Joe, are you willing to have baratas participate in food rescue programs to donate leftover food to community fridges and pantries? Chris, are you willing to put a call out to the businesses you work alongside with to ask them to pitch in to solutions? If you want the suburbs to join the conversation, you need to set the table.
Monica?
My name is Monica. I live in Ward 1. I'm really glad that you aren't continuing to rush the passing of the homelessness ordinances. They are not on this agenda and we're glad to see that. We're glad to see that you're taking more time, you are taking a step back, and you are seriously looking at what's in these ordinances. It's not too late to go back to the drawing board. You can table this. The community will be there at the next homelessness coordinating council meeting on August 27th at noon, Chris. There is so much energy and opportunity in this city and I just cannot understand the hostility and condescension from council when met with criticism of these ordinances. We care about our neighbors. We invite you to join us. Community members in Ward 1 pulled together a town hall on very short notice, which the response that we received from all of you was that it was too short notice. And I'd like to just kind of say that announcing these ordinances to the public on July 18th and then trying to fast-track it on July 22nd was also too fast. It doesn't feel good. It's not, it's not a good plan. Over 80 people came out on a Wednesday night during the fair. People are engaged with this issue and we are not going away. I have a copy for everyone. I have six pages of both barriers that were thought of and solutions and ideas that were discussed at this meeting. I have a copy for all of you. I'd like it entered into the record.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You could have known and experienced what I did, a community with incredible passion and ideas, desperate for funding and robust services, if you held any informational sessions at all, shared any public knowledge of these ordinances, had one public meeting, or let anyone even know that this was happening. You didn't tell most service providers until the week before announcing. You know, and I could go over all of the questions that kept coming up again and again and again from community members, from service providers, from professionals, from people experiencing homelessness at this town hall. What are people supposed to do who are timed out of shelters? Will minors be charged with misdemeanors? When do you get a warrant? How many misdemeanors is required to get a warrant? How do you serve someone with no address? We will not allow you to operate in silence. Like I said, you gave us four days from the time the ordinances were announced to the day that you tried to fast-track it. The staff and service providers with a backbone are sharing the grim reality of what the social safety net in Des Moines is really like. Eight staff members at CIS have been fired as of today for speaking on this ordinance You treat the community like we don't know what's going on, like we are making up the fact that there are 50 beds for women in this city. There are over 100,000 women living in Des Moines. That is not adequate. We met a service provider who has 22 beds for five counties.
Jamie Nicolino.
Hello, my name is Jamie Nicolino. I live in Highland Park, Ward 1. Sorry, Ward 2. I am a small business owner also in Highland Park. My shop, The Collective, is also in Ward 2 in Highland Park. I started a petition last week, which I do have a copy. I only have two copies because it was 84 pages with the over 2,500 signatures that we received. It's a big number, 2,500 signatures in a week. These signatures extend beyond just Des Moines residents and beyond Iowa. Folks from surrounding states here in the Midwest and all across the U.S., California, Kentucky, North Carolina, Georgia, Massachusetts, Florida. As you can see, the small business community here in Des Moines has a huge impact, not only in our direct community and surrounding suburbs, but beyond Des Moines. As a small business owner, I'm extremely proud of the reach that a small shop in Highland Park has. However, what I am not proud of is being a small business owner in a city with leaders who would present such cruelty that they think is a good thing for our city. It is decisions like this that are making small businesses owners like myself question whether or not I want to continue operating my shop here in Des Moines and Iowa, and I know that I'm not the only small business owner considering this because I've had many conversations in the past weeks regarding what we all plan to do when our leases are up. In order for a member of the city government to serve their constituents as strong leaders, they must ensure they lead with empathy, compassion, and integrity. I would like to thank Councilman Mandelbaum for being the only member of the council who has continuously voted against these harmful encampment policies that are being fast-tracked by others. When we have leaders who truly listen and believe in the constituents who elected them, we are rewarded with healthy and vibrant communities as a result. It is not leadership to schedule inaccessible city council meetings at 7:30 on a Monday morning in an attempt to fast-track secretly proposed harmful policy that fines those who are most vulnerable in our city. This is shameful behavior. Communities built on and led by compassion and empathy do not criminalize human misfortune and suffering. As a small business owner and a resident of Des Moines, I implore you to take a step back. Don't just push the vote. Cancel all of this. Take a step back. Please focus on the goal of creating a compassionate and inclusive community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive by showing up for all of your constituents, including those who have a tarp over their head instead of a roof, a city where small businesses and residents are proud to call home. As I said, I have two copies here of the petition and all 2,500-plus signatures. It's a hefty document, so I'm happy to get more copies as well.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gina Donald.
My name is Gina O'Donnell and I live in Ward 3 and I'm a member of Iowa's CCI's racial justice team. I just want to say thank you to all the engaged people who have come here tonight to express your viewpoints. I'm very proud to be a member of a city where people are so engaged. I'm speaking tonight about community engagement in the selection process for a new chief of police. We appreciate the city hiring an independent search firm to conduct the process and that this process has specific community engagement steps included in the search. A few of us in our coalition groups have participated in the focus groups as part of the search process. However, there are members, and not just a few, of our Des Moines community that have justifiable reasons to not trust the police and they don't believe that most of you care what they have to say. After six years of coming to these meetings, I would say I agree with them, but their voices matter and they should especially matter in this selection process. As you may know, the CCI racial justice team held a community meeting last Thursday where we invited everyone to join us in learning about the selection process and then to share what they envision the qualities of our new police chief should have. It was a great meeting, a diverse group of people conversing with each other about the kind of leader that they want to see that will aspire to build a culture of trust between the DMPD and every resident of Des Moines. We have been busy all weekend compiling the responses so we can be sure you are hearing from the folks who have been most impacted by the overpolicing and underinvestment in their neighborhoods. Here are their responses. We hope you will give them the weight they deserve in the selection process. Community safety is all about intentionally building relationships based on trust, getting out of our comfort zones and meeting people where they are. We hope any finalists for the chief of police will have the opportunity to demonstrate to us that they are comfortable with doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Viola Perry. Here in her seat. Sarah Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Viola Perry.
Mayor, council members, Viola Perry, CCI racial justice team, Ward 1. Today, I present to you a petition from community members who we feel as a community should be involved in the hiring process of the new DMPD police chief. We believe that this is a great time to reset and reimagine a police department together so we can rebuild relationships and trust in our communities. Giving the community this opportunity is a beginning step. We want a good police force and a DMPD leader that can think outside the box and create a model for other cities to use. We ask you to consider giving the community a seat at that table during this important process. We also want you to continue to keep community input involved in this process. We also want you to continue to keep community input involved in this process that we might be able to meet and ask questions of all candidates considered for this position. The petition. One final word. Don't close us out.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. JB Conlon.
JB's not here.
Okay. Joe Dolak.
Mayor, member of city council, my name is Joe Dolak. I reside at 300 East Grand. I know I'm the last speaker, so I hope I can continue to grab your attention until we're done. I'm proud to see that you have delayed the reading of... the third reading of the ordinance prohibiting camping and approachments. That means you're listening to us. I've worked in human services for a trust. I urge that the council continue to listen to the community and so that we can come up with evidence-based plans to address those experiencing homelessness, not just as a council, but as a community. I have one rule that I work by for the last decade of human services work. If I'm not 100% about something, I'm going to make the error on the side of compassion. So unless you are 100% sure that this is work, that your ordinance will work, and it won't villainize a single person out there, then vote no. And vote no on the side of compassion. And that's what I'm asking you to do, is to vote no and continue the community conversations because we're smart as a community, and if we're better all working together than right now that the divide has happened due to the optics of the situation. I know that we all have a heart. I know that we all have passions here, but...
Thank you.
I'll move 55A through T.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That ends our meeting.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned.